So the family fled back to Pakistan.
For the second time to Pakistan.
But Anne said her father really didn't want to stay there.
But my father, actually, he loves Afghanistan because he was a soldier, you know? That type. He loves Afghanistan.
So they returned. But this time, they settled in Kabul. And that's where Anne spent her teenage years.
When we come to Kabul, it was safe. There was no Taliban. I was spending my life normally, very normally.
And focused on her studies.
I decided to be a businesswoman, to learn business, to create business for myself.
So she told me she studied very hard.
Every night I was learning just-
She slept only four hours a night.
I was trying to learn and learn and learn.
And then she passed this exam that would allow her to go to university and pursue her dream of studying business.
It was my luck.
She was over the moon about that. Her parents were not.
They told me that you're a girl and the business is for men. It is not for you.
They said, "Look, you can go to university, but if you go, you have to study Islamic Studies."
If you don't want to change it to Islamic Studies, then we don't allow you to go. Stay on home and don't go on there.
And she was definitely disappointed, but she didn't, you know, not want to go to university, so she agreed and-
I said that it's okay. Now I can be, you know, a judge.
She got really into this idea that she could study Islamic law and become a judge.
What Islam say about the rights of women? If someone kill another person, then what should we do? And there was a TV show about a case-
She'd watch TV and sometimes the show she would watch would involve a criminal case and she'd think to herself like-
If a case come to me like this, then I have to think that how should I handle or how should I think?
How would I handle this case?
If there will be many pupil in front of me, then how can I defend someone?
And then she'd go in front of her mirror and kind of pretend that she was a judge.
In front of mirror, I was trying to be a judge and was talking with myself and, you know, acting like a judge. I was doing all these things and I said that, oh my God, if I will be a judge, then it will be, you know, fabulous. Because there was no one in our family or there was no girl who are a judge. And I said, "Okay, it's also good."
You know, she felt really excited that maybe she could kind of blaze a trail in her family in this way.
You know, as a woman in Afghanistan to be a judge, it's a big personality. I was trying and I was dreaming like this. You know, my numbers was great.
Your grades were great?
Yes, it was great.
And she was just about to start her fourth semester in August.
We were starting our new semester.
When the Taliban came to Kabul.
Done this. Suddenly, all dreams, someone broke all your dreams. A life without any dreams is like nonsense. It's nothing. And, you know, I lost everything.
Lindsay Garrison is a senior producer for The Daily. Tomorrow, Lindsay brings us the conclusion of Anne's story.
The Daily is supported by CrowdStreet, where thousands of investors are building their portfolios with institutional-quality real estate deals, all online. Current opportunities can be found at crowdstreet.com. And by Twilio, the customer data platform for companies around the world looking to unlock and unify realtime data and deliver truly personalized campaigns at scale. More at twilio.com. Distribution of The Daily is made possible by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it, The Daily. I'm Michael Bobo. See you tomorrow.
I'd like to call the 7:00 PM meeting of Roanoke City Council for December the 20th, 2021, to order. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call a roll.
Mr. Best pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a call is present. Mr. Spencer, do we have to do the voting process again for Ms. Moon?
No, Mayor, we recessed, so this is basically one big meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, as you can see, Ms. Moon Reynolds is joining us by Zoom, so you got to have it there. All right, invocation tonight will be delivered by Bishop Jamal Jackson, pastor of Refreshing Church here in the city. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand as Bishop Jackson comes and lead us in our invocation?
Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. Thank you on behalf of who we are and all that who are gathered tonight here in this place. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you've given to us. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you tonight for the ability to be involved in useful work, for the honor and bearing appropriate responsibility. Thanks for all and thanks for all of the freedom that you've given to us, to embrace you and even the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. And Father, we thank you that even in the scriptures, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So therefore, I pray for our mayor tonight, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council tonight. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to give amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray that you would give them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. I pray that you would give them confidence in what is good and fitting. I pray that you would give them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. And I pray for the agenda set before them tonight, and please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live, work, and play here in this beloved city of Roanoke, Virginia. Is our prayer tonight. In the blessed name of Jesus the Christ, I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, Pastor Jackson, for your prayer. Thank you. I want to welcome everybody to our evening session of City Council. Council meetings, as many of you know, will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing prepared. And I do welcome all of you here with us tonight. I do want to recognize my colleagues here on council, former colleagues, and just a minute. Former councilman Rupert Cutler is here. And his wife is with us and she's a former councilwoman. And she has to take some of the criticism we get for former members and all of that, so I'm glad to have her there. And Brenda, raise your hand. Brenda McDaniel. I had a chance to serve with both of them. They're great people and it's good to see them tonight. And my former vice mayor, Anita Jane Price is here. Anita, I thought I saw you. Okay, good to see all of y'all tonight. All right, we've got some special things to do tonight. And I like this because we're recognizing people in our community that get things done. So I'm going to ask my vice mayor to come down with me to start off that program tonight. All right, our first item on the agenda is the presentation of the 2021 Citizen of the Year. Now, this is always a tough job for us. And it's also fitting to honor this person. We do this every year. Dr. Cutler, you know what we do. We sit back there and it's a tough decision. We look through our name, but it's a tough decision. And it's always difficult for the members of the council to select that one special citizen because so many in our community go really above and beyond the call of duty to serve our citizens and our fellow citizens. And we're honored to recognize the person tonight who is very community-oriented. The Honoree leads grants, projects, including childhood obesity and teen pregnancy programs. The Honoree demonstrates a tireless commitment to this city through an active and productive engagement in multiple programs, inspiring and empowering others to achieve their personal best. So on behalf of Vice Mayor, Twist White Boyd, who's going to unveil who that is in a moment, and all the members of Roanoke City Council, I am pleased to announce that Roanoke 2021 Citizen of the Year is Dr. Cheryl Hartman. Oh, come on down, family.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, this is like, this is your life or something.
Come on around him.
Thanks, dear.
Jared, well, come over here. Come on, guys.
Yeah, you can. I sometimes feel we gotta- I'm facing a council. I wish I was facing you all. Rup, did we make that change before you left? All right, this is great.
Thank you, sir.
She's been giving back to this community for many years through her involvement with numerous charities, such as St. John's Episcopal Church, the Kiwanis Club, and all the Kiwanis that are here tonight. All right, that's great. And Anne Junior League. She's also devoted time and effort in the area of addiction treatment and even established an adolescent addiction treatment program called Back on Track. She successfully led the campaign to raise $420,000 to construct a playground in northwest Roanoke. And is currently, she's currently leading a follow-up campaign to create a Kiwanis Nature Park in the same area. Oh, yeah, come on. And these are things that she volunteers and does. This is citizens that are just giving their time. And after, and all of us know how time is. You never know how much time that you have, but you give that time. And this is just part of what she did. And as of this evening, Dr. Hartman's name will join the ranks of some other outstanding and distinguished Roanokers who have been honored as Citizen of the Year, such as Robert Sandell, Dr. Sandell, who is the president of Virginia Wesleyan Community College. Ms. Estelle McCatten, who led the neighborhood for years, and she's still active in leading a neighborhood group for years and years, and she's a special person. And David Wiley, the maestro. And those are just a few people that we selected for Citizen of the Year. Dr. Hartman, I'm honored to unveil our Citizen of the Year plaque, which will display, really, your photograph where that star is there. Will display your photograph as 2021 Citizen of the Year. And that will be on display in the lobby area on the second floor of the North Municipal, North Telomunicipal Building. And it'll be there. You'll always recognize it, so you, from here on out, your picture will be there. And so, but also, I'd like to present to you your own personalized plaque. And we have that here. This is a plaque which is the highest award we give in our city. And it's the key to this city. And it reads as follows. Presented to Dr. Sherri W. Hartman, 2021 Citizen of the Year, in appreciation of dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens throughout the Roanoke community by Mayor Sherman Blythe Senior and member of the Roanoke City Council, December the 20th, 2021. Congratulations. And Rup, I'm going to use some of my- I've got something for you to do, Rup. Come on down.
Put you to work here, Rup.
I put you to work. Rup's former member of council, and I tell you, I really enjoy working with him. I learned more about the tree than about the city side. But Dr. Cutler admitted, this tremendous work in this city is still active. And this is another award for Dr. Hartman and it's Kiwanis Club of Roanoke, but I wanted you to present this to us.
You're very nice. Thank you very much. Well, as many of you know, Sherri and I are partners in this nature park project and we're on email. You know, she never sleeps. Well, I got an email from her. It started at 3:00 AM or 4:00 AM. You know, I have, so I don't know when she sleeps. You heard about all her jobs and her husband and her Kiwanis and church work and so forth. Amazing woman, so I'm very pleased to give you this personal plaque. My great honor to do this. Thank you, man.
Now, we have, I got to make all this legal. We got to do a resolution to make it all legal and vote on it. But we have a formal resolution which pays tribute to you as the 2021 Citizen of the Year. So we have a resolution. I need a motion and a second one.
I move that solution.
There's a second. All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
In its entirety?
A resolution naming and honoring Dr. Cheryl Hartman as the City of Roanoke's 2021 Citizen of the Year. Whereas Dr. Hartman has focused her career on science-driven approaches to the prevention of school dropouts, teen pregnancy, obesity, and substance misuse, and worked primarily with youth until her shift into the addiction treatment field. Whereas, as a junior league volunteer, Dr. Hartman brought a teen pregnancy prevention program to Roanoke and was named the Director of Youth Development at Family Services of Roanoke Valley, where she worked for 15 years. Whereas, after retiring from Family Service of Roanoke Valley, Dr. Hartman began her work with Carillion Clinic, establishing an adolescent addiction treatment program called Back on Track. Whereas, as a current faculty member of the Virginia Tech Carillion School of Medicine, Dr. Hartman serves as the school's grants project director. Whereas, Dr. Hartman has led grant projects, including a childhood obesity prevention program that created school gardens in Roanoke City Elementary Schools. Whereas, Dr. Hartman has worked directly with her husband, Dr. David Hartman, to develop Carillion's office-based opioid treatment program and serves as program manager. Whereas, Dr. Hartman has been an active member of the Kiwanis Club of Roanoke and served as president during the 2019-2020 club year. Whereas, under Dr. Hartman's leadership, Kiwanis adapted many of its programs to aid the community during the COVID pandemic, including recruiting volunteers for vaccination clinics, allotting grant funds to local charities, and starting a partnership with Roanoke City Public Libraries to make video books available to teachers and children within the community. Whereas, from 2018 to 2020, Dr. Hartman successfully led the campaign to raise the funds and construct Centennial Playground, a $400,000 children's playground in northwest Roanoke, which Kiwanis gave free and clear to the City of Roanoke upon its completion. Whereas, Dr. Hartman is leading a second phase of this playground that will rehabilitate nearby Horton Branch with natural plantings, a walking trail, and environmental education facilities. Whereas, Dr. Hartman has been involved with a number of charities in the Roanoke Valley over the years and was instrumental in founding the Community Youth Program based out of St. John's Episcopal Church. Whereas, City Council desires to recognize Dr. Hartman for her outstanding accomplishments and devotion of her time to serve her community and the City of Roanoke. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Roanoke as follows. One, Council recognizes, commends, and applauds Dr. Cheryl Hartman as the 2021 City of Roanoke Citizen of the Year for her many contributions and services to her community to sustain, enhance, and improve the quality of life in our city. Number two, the City Clerk is directed to forward an attested copy of this resolution to Dr. Cheryl Hartman.
Members of council, I'm going to ask us to go ahead and vote on this resolution and then we'll come back and get remarks from you. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes. Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes, congratulations. Dr. Hartman, and I know, uh, members of council have some words to say, and following that, I'll let you have to say a few words. All right? Members of council, Mr. Best pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Sherri, thank you for all you've done for this community. I think I can safely say that I knew before any of the other council members that are here right now about your desire to have this playground in the City of Roanoke longer than anybody else. I, I don't even know how many years it was, it's a long time back when you and I were both working for Family Service of Roanoke Valley, and I even went with you on a couple of occasions to look at the possible sites. And I think a lot of people would have said, you know, I've given it my best shot, I've tried hard, and it just doesn't seem to be coming together, and, you know, it just never is gonna happen. But you have persistence, and you have resourcefulness, and you were determined to make it happen, and you were able to do it in the centennial year, the 100th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Roanoke, during which year you were the president of the club. And it's in a location where it will serve children who desperately need that type of opportunity for outdoor recreation and play, and it's right next to the library, so maybe it will encourage some of them to take more advantage of the library as well. So, thank you, Sherri. I won't even go into all the lists that the clerk read of the things that you've done, but, uh, it's very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cobb?
Congratulations, Sherri.
Thank you.
I could echo everything that Bill said and everything that was read, but I, I just wanna share a couple of personal things. When I moved to Roanoke in 2001, I did not know a soul, and wasn't sure, um, what my life would be like here. And you and David were two of the first people that I met, and you made it clear from the beginning that, uh, your love extended to me as a stranger. And you made a way for me to initiate a ministry program at St. John's Episcopal Church, which I will never forget, and I hope touched some lives along the way. And, um, I will also never forget visiting St. John's a couple of years ago. I think it was pre-COVID because there were a lot of people there, and it may have been a Christmas Eve service, uh, my memory's a little foggy on that, we'll just say it was. And, um, it was packed, and I found a seat right in front of you all, and there was a couple seated, seated next to you, and, and the woman of the couple said, oh, Sherri and David, it is so good to see your son here. He's changed a little bit, but he, he looks, he looks so good. And you just rolled right with it. And you claimed me as your son that night, and I will always be grateful, so thank you.
I'm proud to have you as my son.
Thank you. Coming right down. Vice Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hartman, I just wanna say congratulations to you. Um, you have made so many, many, many contributions to this city, and we are truly grateful and fortunate to have you as a resident of our city. And this award is well deserved, well earned, and, um, just keep doing what you're doing. We need you, and we appreciate you. Congratulations.
Mrs. Jeffrey?
Uh, Dr. Hartman, again, I just wanna echo what everyone else has said, um, you have truly impacted our community with your work, and not only with the hard work, but with your heart, and that's the most important thing. You're very passionate about your work. Uh, thank you so much for your work with the playground. Um, I've seen kids walk through there every day, and because of you and your hard work, I truly admire the great work you've done in this community. God bless you, and thank you so much, and congratulations.
Ms. Vivian Sanchez Jones?
We just felicitada, Dr. Hartman. When I met you at Family Services, I fell in love with you because you had such a heart, and you wanted to help the Latino community, and you did, and I just wanted to thank you for that, that you included them in your efforts to reach out everyone in our community. So, thank you for all you have done in our community. Gracias.
Thank you. And now, uh, another Kiwanian, Ms. Stephanie Moon Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Sherri, what can I say? My heart is overwhelmed, and I'm trying to come up with the words, but I do first and foremost wanna say congratulations. Uh, this award could not go to more of a deserving person than you. And I have to echo what the mayor said, uh, this award, it, when it comes down to the nominations, it is always a tough decision. But, uh, when yours was presented, and I believe it was to Jackie Smith, who actually nominated, so I wanted to congratulate and thank, uh, Jackie for that nomination, and to also thank two Kiwanians who supported the nomination, which is Dr. Cutler, and also, uh, media past president Mike McEnboy. So, I do wanna thank them as well. And I just wanna say, you are a woman who never sleeps, a woman who's just like a do-or-die battery. You go, and you go, and you go, and I'm thankful to be part of your circle, when you wanna get things done, that you do reach out and include me, for, because you have a passion for you, and I support that 100%. Your heart is really in the right place when it comes, uh, to, to the youth, especially in the northwest community. You're always thinking, how can I help? What can we do? Uh, as if we haven't done enough. When is enough enough? Never is enough enough. So, I do commend you and congratulate you again, and thank your family for coming, thank all the Kiwanians for coming out to support you. And, uh, you don't need that presentation and that PowerPoint.
Well, John Mayan receiving the 2021 Citizen of the Year for the City of Roanoke, Dr. Sherri Hartman. Dr. Hartman, the mic is yours.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Councilmen, and City Clerk, who had such a mouthful to read. I, I am so humbled and so honored. I have to tell you, it means so much to me because I do love our City of Roanoke so much. And, you know, I just see this city come together to face challenges time and time again. And we have our challenges, as every city does, but we also have so much to draw upon. And every time there's an issue that comes before us, I see our community rally together and unite to make this a better place for all who live here. So, it's, it's just such an honor, I can't imagine anything that would be a greater honor than this. So, thank you all so, so much. I wrote a speech, I was thinking that I'm talking about the playground and the future nature park, and I did not know that this was about to happen to me. But the, the playground was, the Kiwanis Centennial Playground, was a birthday gift, as I think Bill mentioned, and, uh, so it was designed to be unwrapped for the community to honor and celebrate the Kiwanis Club of Roanoke's 100th anniversary. Um, and of course, it's more than a birthday gift, and as Jackie Bledsoe, who is my co-chair, and I always said, it's really more than an amalgam of playground equipment. For us, it was a beacon of hope for a neighborhood that has been dragged down by hopelessness. And as Bill said, I so wanted that playground for that site. And I'll tell you, the Kiwanis Club stepped up to the plate in a big, big way. They did an amazing job of rallying around raising the money for that playground. But we were joined by dozens of community partners, and many of them are right here in this room. Nothing that I did, or that the club did, could have been done alone. It's because this community is willing to come together, and I'm so grateful for that. We can do so much, accomplish so much by coming together for our youth, Stephanie. The nature park, right now, we're off to a great start involving the youth. We're so excited that they're showing up to help plan it, to help kill the grass, that's the first exciting activity. Lay down plastic and kill some grass. But they, you know, they're enthusiastic about it, and they have a sense, they, they can influence the future by being involved. And so, we're very hopeful about that as well, the youth empowerment, the impact of this on our youth in that neighborhood and throughout Roanoke, so. And working with Dr. Rupert Cutler, doesn't get better than that, does it? So, uh, thank you all so much. I, I've been honored with this recognition and to work with so many of you over the years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you all. Right now, we're gonna move down to other presentations, and this is something that all of us take a lot of pride in, and especially here as on council, is our neighborhoods. And we're gonna make the presentations of the 2021 Neighborhood Partnership Awards. And I'm gonna call on Alicia Grub, who's the chairperson of the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, and Josh Johnson, the Neighborhood Coordinator, and Lauren Waldron, to come forward now and, and Lauren, the Community Engagement Manager, for introductions and opening remarks following, uh, the remarks by each council member who will be participating in this event. So, you all have it. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Alicia Grub, and I am the Chair of Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates. Um, if it's okay, I might stand on the side so that I can address the audience as well. We are excited tonight to announce the 2021 Neighborhood Partnership Awards. The Neighborhood Partnership Program recognizes and honors the outstanding contributions, excellence, and accomplishments achieved by neighborhood organizations and civic individuals who have partnered with city departments, schools, nonprofits, businesses, institutions, and others, to make physical or social improvements to a neighborhood, to connect neighbors and neighborhoods with one another, and to build capacity of their neighborhood organization to better serve our community. The Neighborhood Partnership Awards are put on by the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates with the Office of Community Engagement and the Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to recognize those who are here, Josh Johnson from the Office of Neighborhood Services, some of you probably see his emails a lot, um, and Lauren Waldron from the Office of Community Engagement, you'll see her Facebook posts a lot. And then from RNA, we have Bishop Jackson, and Sunny Purvience, and Ms. Amazetta Anderson, and we have a new member who will be joining us in January, Mr. Duriel Wood, there in the back, so we're glad he got to be here and, and see it all. Oh, and Jordan Bell, sorry, Jordan. And Jordan Bell is here as well, thank you. Um, I, I do wanna say while we're here, we have a couple of vacancies on the board, so if you have any interest in working with neighborhoods, connecting people, putting on events for the neighborhoods, helping people get, get together, uh, we'd love for you to apply, you can apply on the Roanoke City website, um, and we'd love to, would love to see your application come through. We had a lot of incredible nominees for all of these awards, and I hate when people say you're all winners, because I'm really competitive, and I only believe in one winner, but this is a time when we all benefit from the work that you all are doing. Our city is better because of the projects that you're doing to rehab tennis courts, and to connect neighbors, and to put out communications, and to, um, put music to encourage people. Our community is better because of what you do, and every single person who was nominated was nominated for a reason, and you all did incredible work that we are so, um, honored to, to recognize tonight. Our first award is the Neighborhood City Partnership Award. This award is intended to recognize any city department or employee that has assisted or provided resources on a project, program, or activity that improved or enhanced a neighborhood's quality of life. I stood on the wrong side.
Uh-oh. All right, something happened. Doing a remix here.
You get the gist.
Yes, I do.
No, 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 we'll skip, we'll go in order of the PowerPoint, I'll move the PowerPoint. And if you all, um, if you would stand when your name is read as you're nominated, and then if you are announced as the winner, if you'll come up and receive your award and your certificate from Josh and Lauren, that would be great.
We're not going in the order that...
PowerPoints is in a different order.
Okay.
Our next award is the Neighborhood Youth Award Volunteer Award. The Neighborhood Volunteer, the Neighborhood Youth Volunteer Award recognizes outstanding volunteer contributions by a single youth ages 18 and under, or group which improves or positively affects the life and living conditions of individuals in the neighborhood. We wanted to take a few more minutes to recognize incredible work our youth are doing by reading more of the nomination information. The nominees are Christian Bryant. Christian is a senior at William Fleming High School. He placed silver for the 2020 NAACP Local At-Soul Competition in the Vocal Contemporary Category. He serves on the Roanoke Branch NAACP Youth Council, where he is the Community Coordinator Chair. Christian is a part of the Roanoke Youth Services Board. He re, he represented the City of Roanoke in Washington, DC, at the National League of Cities as well. He is part of the Air Force JROTC at William Fleming, and he's also an avid, an avid member of the Colonel's Theater Company. After high school, Christian plans to pursue his dream and further his passion in performing arts. Next nominee is Judah Clement. At the age of seven, Judah has already had a huge impact in Roanoke City, as the owner of Judah Bug Lemonade, judahbug.com. Judah has leveraged his business to fulfill his mission statement, to create happiness and make the world a better place through a refreshing and delicious lemonade. Judah has contributed to a number of... use among youth, and worked hand in hand with other RYL-A members to compete, to complete, I'm sorry, a handle with care presentation. Jasmeera has shown great leadership and willingness to help in the community, whatever the challenge may be. Our next nominee is Javion Tucker. Javion is a young activist always looking for new ways to get involved in his community. Javion is a proud member of the Patrick Henry Player Theater Department and Patrick Henry Marching Patriots. He recently joined the Roanoke Branch of the NAACP Youth Council and was appointed to the Youth Service Board of Roanoke. Javion spent a lot of his time volunteering with family services of Roanoke. Over the summer of 2020, Javion became an activist, speaking out about racial injustice and becoming an activist for youth. He started having meetings with local and state representatives on their plans to handle issues in the city of Roanoke. Javion is a proud and active member of Perfecting Unity Church where he's a youth usher. And the winner is...
Our second award this evening is the Neighborhood Improvement Award. This award recognizes a neighborhood project or activity which improves, enhances, and/or maintains the quality of life in their neighborhood. And we have two nominees. The Roanoke Footsall at Preston Park, organized by Elver Berwick and Philip Clements. Are you here? Yeah. And the second nominee is One Valley Council, the Carver Community Garden, which was initiated by Reverend Carol Carter, and he's also here with us. And the winner is One Valley Council, the Carver Community Garden. One Valley's vision is to lift and unite our entire Valley community through the following educational and environmental actions. Creation of sustainable, community-centered institutions, such as the George Washington Carver Environmental Education Center. The Carver Community Garden was initiated by the Reverend Carol Carter in 2012, when he served as pastor at St. Paul United Methodist Church in northwest Roanoke. The garden was planted in response to community conversations regarding the need for better food access in order to create a healthy community. The garden is maintained by volunteers. An ongoing One Valley project is called the Neighborhood Secure Star City Food Systems Project. The NSFSP is a collaborative effort to effectively address health and economic disparities facing neighborhood families and to develop a sustainable local food system within the food desert of northwest Roanoke.
Our next award is the Neighborhood Community Partnership Award, and this award is for contributions made by a business, a nonprofit, a school, or other institution to improve the surrounding neighborhood or community. And tonight, we have two nominees. First nominee is The Foundry. Would everyone that's here with The Foundry please stand? And the second nominee is Chillin', Shaved Ice, Andrew Beltrum and Melanie Crowe. The winner of the Community Partnership Award is Chillin', Shaved Ice. Andrew and Melanie are the owners of Chillin', Shaved Ice located in southeast Roanoke. They kicked off their 2021 Shaved Ice season by cosponsoring the first annual Good Neighbors 5K hosted by Run About Sports Roanoke to benefit the Clean Valley Council. This event challenged neighbors from afar, from far and wide, to complete a 5K litter cleanup. Melanie and Andrew participated with the I Heart Southeast Litter Cleanup Team, helping the team to collect nineteen bags of litter from southeast streets. Throughout the year, Chillin' has provided space for Southeast Action Forum socials, hosted a Chalking Station for Humble Hustles Chalk Up the City with Love Day, provided free shaved ice for John P. Fishwick Middle School teachers on Teacher Appreciation Day, provided free shaved ice for Rescue Mission guests and staff during Love Southeast Fest Week, and joined the community for a fun national night out event at Golden Park. They also launched their Chillin' Ice Doin' Nice fundraiser program that helped raise awareness and donations for nineteen local nonprofits. On Wednesdays throughout the season, Chillin' donated ten percent of their sales and one hundred percent of their tips to previously selected and advertised nonprofits, ultimately donating a total of $1,986.29 into the community. Through their social media, friendly customer service experience, community engagement, and volunteer service, the Chillin', Shaved Ice team is living out the mission they've posted on their website. We believe that all of us can make the world a better place. Little things add up to big change. The love that Melanie and Andrew are pouring into the community through Chillin', Shaved Ice is certainly adding up to make big positive change in southeast and beyond. Congratulations.
Okay, the next award is the City Partnership Award. This award is intended to recognize any city department or employee that has assisted or provided resources on a project, program, or activity that improved or enhanced a neighborhood's quality of life. The nominees this evening are Katie Hendrick from Community Engagement for her work with language lines access and COVID-19 outreach, Patrick Boaz from Parks, the Parks and Recreation Department, for his work in connecting folks in our city through recreation and our parks that we have. Our next nominee is the Weston Center and the Roanoke Police Department with their And then William Drake from the Police Department for his mask donation. And the winner is Katie Hendrick. Katie cannot be here tonight, so I'm going to ask Lauren to accept it for her.
Yes. I just want to say a few words regarding Katie, just in her absence of not being able to be here tonight. Most everyone I'm sure here has probably already interacted with Katie. She has been a stellar addition and impactful addition to the community, and we continue with her work in bridging the gaps in our community around all things that are just sets, in working on program programming, and just in our local work initiatives. So, kudos to Katie.
Let me make an announcement before we go too far, before people leave. There is a reception downstairs. Do you hear? I'm sorry, I scratched that. I just got the text.
All right. Our next award is the Neighborhood Communications Award. The Neighborhood Communications Award is intended to recognize excellence and quality and creativity in neighborhood-oriented publications and/or other neighborhood communication outreach activities. The nominee is Air League Court Neighborhood Newsletter. And the winner is? You can guess. It's Air League Court. Ben Birch is the president of the Air League Court Neighborhood Watch Group. Ben Birch has produced a newsletter for neighbors for the last twenty years. He writes it himself and prints them out. The newsletter is distributed to every new neighbor and welcomes them to the neighborhood. The newsletter includes upcoming meetings, block volunteers' contact information, block yard sign sales, and monthly recipe for different dishes. Kate Pascal shared that her parents moved into the neighborhood and received the newsletter personally. They voiced how the newsletter made them feel immediately welcome and included in the community.
And our next award is the Neighborhood Outstanding Volunteer Leadership Award. This award is for an individual who has given outstanding service to his or her neighborhood. And the nominees are Sunny Purvience, Southeast Action Forum, Reach, does anyone hear from Spence Robertson, Southeast Action Forum, Nolan Jackson, Red Cross, Kenneth Hurt, Eureka Tennis Club, Philip Clements, The Foundry, and the winner is... Thank you. Spence Robertson.
This is Cindy. This is not Spence.
Oh, I was going to say, that's not... Spence Robertson, AKA Super Spence, has been a caring and engaged southeast neighbor for over fourteen years and has provided especially consistent and outstanding service to his southeast neighborhood and Roanoke community throughout 2021. Throughout just this one year, Spence has participated in over seventy community events, including tree plantings, southeast action forum meetings and socials, trunk or treat, and many, many litter cleanups in southeast and all over Roanoke with the Roanoke Pluckers. And you have to know what a plucker is, that's picking up litter all while walking. So that is very key, because in fact, in 2021, Spence had a perfect plucking attendance, not missing even one of Roanoke Pluckers' forty-three publicly held cleanup walks. In addition to participating in so many community events, Spence often makes special contributions during volunteer activities by bringing homemade treats, sharing homegrown garden goodies, and providing tools, supplies, and his jack-of-all-trades expertise for many projects. At the young age of seventy-four, Spence is a shining example that getting out to meet and build relationships with your neighbors, volunteering in the community, improving projects, and participating in community engagement opportunities, and does contribute to creating a better quality of life and neighborhood experience for yourself and others. Spence's quantity and quality of volunteer service in working with I Heart Southeast, Southeast Action Forum, and the Roanoke Pluckers has been tremendous, and his friendly, encouraging, and generous spirit helps motivate others and makes this fun. Congratulations, Spence.
I'm so excited to be a part of Southeast Action Forum, Sunny. Spence is such an inspiration. Every time I turn around, he's out there doing something.
Who has arts?
Stephanie does. She's virtual.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, you're up next.
Hi, thank you. It is my pleasure and honor to present the Neighborhood Arts Award, which recognizes a neighborhood project or activity which improves the quality of the art in the neighborhood, enhances the character of the neighborhood through the arts, or improves the surrounding through the visual or performing arts. The nominees are We Are Art, Rap Cypher, and Mark Davis.
She should have a script.
I just went until they said that.
Yes, ma'am.
The project led by creative director Matt Lee Mosley, a community... And a member of the Roanoke Arts Commission, is a celebration of black culture through a staple in the hip-hop culture, Rap Cypher. This cypher features several local rappers, Khalil Alexander, Ebony Harrington, Dayla Dent, Deontay Hall, Brian Hancock, Tyler Langhorn, and LaPee Queisha Moore. Each artist wrote their own individual parts of the song while the chorus is spoken in unison. Filming was conducted at the Grand and... Filming was conducted at the Grand and Dear, and the film included artwork by Internet Hale from the city's public art collection, as well as books illustrated by Theodore Taylor III, a native of Roanoke. Chris Tribble of Snap Cracking Park Photography led creative direction of the filming. And Mark Rainey took photos. The music instrumental is by Andre Harrison, AKA R. Beat Sunk Dumble. And the mixing and mastering was handled by Cameron Hughes of Roanoke. And I quote, "The goal of this musical collaboration is to encourage Roanoke's community members to know that the whole city is for all Roanokes," said Sheila Umberg, director of libraries. "The hope of the artists and all the partners is that this cypher will help break down barriers while celebrating our many cultures." Again, congratulations.
Hey, everybody, thank y'all so much. I want to say a couple of things really, really quick. First and foremost, God is good, period. Secondly, I want to say thanks to my family for being here. Thanks to the crew. Thanks to my mama, because she's one of the most creative women I've ever met in my entire life. And I'm going to stop because I'm about to cry for some reason. It's not just the allergies. But I'm seriously so grateful for this crew. We got this done in a month, with God's help. We got this whole thing done in a month. It was like, the idea came to mind, I hit up Chris, I said, let's talk about it. I hit up the artist, I said, let's do this. We got the recording done, the mixing and mastering, the video, everything done in one month. And I don't even know how, other than I said, God is good. And then, yeah, my heart ultimately is to say that when I do things that I do, I don't just want to get praise for myself. I really want everyone to have a, not just a seat at the table, but a meal. Because we're all going to do this together, that's it. So God bless you, thank you so much. And I'm sorry, Mayor, I have to say this, though, but, Blue, fight! Thank you so much.
Good thing I'm in a fraternity. Is that me? The Neighborhood All-Star Award. Our eighth award and final award is the Neighborhood All-Star Award. The Neighborhood All-Star Award recognizes the exceptional accomplishments achieved by an eligible neighborhood organization, institution, or individual who received one or more nominations in one or more of the Neighborhood Partnership Award categories that improved and/or enhanced a specific neighborhood or city neighborhood's quality of life. The winner is, all right, The Foundry. Come on down. The Foundry is a community change agent located in Roanoke, Virginia, that provides solutions and resources for all people to unlock their full potential. The ultimate mission is to help people discover and develop their strengths so that their talents would impact the world in a unique way. The Foundry directly creates community change through their volunteer work, coaching, consulting, training, and specialized staffing solutions. When the COVID-19 pandemic started in 2020, there were many issues that developed pertaining to youth and their families in the Roanoke Valley. Budget reductions, council youth recreational sports programming. School systems faced unprecedented challenges of providing, challenges, I'm sorry, of providing virtual and in-person learning and locality battling against increased crime and violence. The Foundry immediately stepped in to ensure students had access to recreational sports. They negotiated a partnership between the city of Roanoke, county of Roanoke, and with a private soccer organization to run a fully operational recreation soccer league. The Foundry was able to ensure that 25-plus teams and hundreds of participants were outdoors to engage in sports, a much-needed reprieve from the pandemic. The Foundry staff and trained community members to become qualified educational specialists to assist in the Preston Park Virtual Learning Academy and after-school programs. The Foundry is also very involved in local business. Through the last year, the Foundry has provided multiple volunteer webinars focused on helping businesses survive. Philip Clements, the founder's CEO and volunteers, who volunteered his time with leadership Roanoke Valley, the region's premier leadership development program. The Foundry champions two simple and important ideas. First, all people deserve the opportunity to grow into healthy, independent, and engaged citizens. Second, collaboratively, we all have the responsibility to ensure that opportunity prevails. Over the last year, the Foundry has lived out these ideas by leading with purpose during the most challenging of times. Congratulations to the Foundry, our 2021 All-Star Award. And let me say to all, congratulations to all of our winners. And thank you, RNA, for your work, the chairperson, Alicia, and Josh, for your leadership and dedication to our neighborhoods. We greatly appreciate it, and we're a better city because of your all's leadership. Thank you so much, and thank all of you all for coming tonight. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and come back and continue the agenda. We'll take a five-minute break and come back and continue the agenda.